Yeah, do you, I was gonna ask you, are we sure to, uh, carry today? Hello?
Hi.
What?
I said, I was afraid. I was thinking.
Um.
Yeah.
As would have been the whole day.
Actually, it's pretty short.
Make sure we, we have our devices to do this meeting. Cause I think we need to. And do we, should we keep it in together was my other question like? Teach and Richard and Julie and I could mean like Richard and you and Julie and I could be. Cause I don't, I think we discovered at the last meeting, the same, doesn't sound to me like the same thing that happened.
We're all.
I want to leave it up to the mayor.
May, exactly.
Oh, sure. We got that at the next meeting. Yeah.
I said, I said, I got pinned in.
I think.
I can't. Then I should try to create and wasn't a good decision. We're not like people.
Okay.
Yes, yes, and then you're going for like a year or so.
Yeah, okay. We missed.
The one she said, well, what she stayed at home. We call Thursday night.
Julie, I really, really, really not coming?
I don't know. Maybe they're just a train bombing.
Yeah.
Tonight, looks like we're a little past six o'clock, six so one. I'll call the meeting to order. It's rise for the pledge. Pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with a vision of justice for all. All right. All right, I need a motion here for approval of the agenda. Some more.
I'll sign it.
Who made the motion?
Me.
Yeah, oh, worry. Second in line. Okay, any discussion, changes, deletions, additions?
Were you gonna add the motion to agree?
Yes, okay. We'll add that motion to approve a special meeting. That will be eight point two.
Thank you.
I will amend my motion to include that.
Include that one?
Okay. Anything else? There it is now. Those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, nay. Okay, motion carries. All right. Welcome to all those in the audience today. Public comment, do we have anybody signed up?
I did not have anybody call me.
Nobody signed up, nobody sheeted in? Okay. Did we have a sheet or?
Well, we changed the, uh, it was about a year and a half ago that we changed to, um, having people call and tell me they wanted to speak. That's been on since a while.
I, I'm just thinking, I know we had a discussion about that and it wasn't real clear. It didn't say, it didn't say that you must. Right? Is that, that was.
Well, I, I know I was talking to one person, um, Matt.
Yeah.
And, and, um, this afternoon and, you know, it was just past 12 and I said, hey, you know what? If you want to, you can still talk just because, because of the issue of not being clear. So, do you want to speak?
If you don't mind, yeah.
Yeah, just only because we had contact through staff. If you, uh, that's okay with the board?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think our, our policy was a little not.
Well, I, the policy is what the policy is, but go ahead. I, I think if you want to.
Yeah, I think, uh, um, the reason I'm here, I guess, is just, uh, my wife and I, as parents of, of young kids in the school, had some concerns about what we would, what those kids would be facing starting the new school year. I think a lot of us, going back to 2020, uh, when the virus hit, we all kind of just, well, we don't know what we're up against here. But after, um, going a year, we kind of know what we're up against and, and we kind of finished out the school year 2020 like it is what it is. We'll wear these masks and stuff, but I have concerns that we'll be forced to do that again with our kids, uh, starting the school year. And I guess I'm here just to ask, is there a plan in place or what is the exact plan for that? And I guess as parents, what can we do to help so that we don't have to wear, the kids don't have to wear masks starting the school year?
Julie, I'd love to respond to that, even though it doesn't address that we give a response, but if the board wouldn't mind. Yeah. So, one of the, hello?
Hi.
Here's a couple of visitors here there and. It was late Friday afternoon when I got, finally got some information from the CDC and now I, we all have different opinions about the CDC, right? So, but I needed to know kind of the essence of what they're telling us. So Mitch and Judd and I each read the document this morning. And from three o'clock this afternoon until about five fifteen, when I came out here, we worked on the different parts of that document that they want us to address. Things like mask or no masking, um, how are we cleaning? And a lot of things that were similar to the last plan we had to have in place. So what we did, hi.
Hi.
Um, there's a couple of seats here and we're gonna have Lane, oh, there's Lane, okay, one of the seats just got taken. Oh, and Kim too. So we have spent, literally several hours today working on a plan. We know that you don't want masks for your kids. Guess what? We don't want to fight the battle of the mask. Really, truly, we don't. So, one of the reasons I just asked Julie earlier is to add an agenda item for the board to approve our, what's called our emergency operations plan. That we will, the three of us, continue to hammer away on and, um, cause we need to do more, we need to spend more time on things like visitors in the school. How do we make visitors in the school happen? Cause I know that people didn't like sending their preschooler, here's the end of the sidewalk, go on in. I don't see my teacher, my kids' teachers. I know I'm over my two minutes. Scott. So, all those things that we learned that people didn't like last year, we're trying to figure out how we can make it happen and still everybody be safe. So I'll just use the example of open house is another thing that we're talking about. How do we make open house safe for everybody so that families can come in, see where their kid's teacher's gonna be, see where their desk is and do it all safely? So that's what we, the three of us, have been working on today. It's not done yet, it's in its rough, rough, rough form. We still need to meet with our school nurse to add her input into it. And, um, then I want to bring it to the board in, in that special meeting. Cause the board needs to approve it. I don't want, I can't wait for August, cause we're, it's too close to school and parents want to know now. So, yeah, um, yes.
Just two quick questions. Was it a recommendation or a mandate?
Recommendations.
Okay. And then second is, what's the breakdown percentage of kids that actually got sick from COVID in our school?
Um, I, the.
Not, not tested positive, but actually physically got sick. So if it's.
I don't know though.
No, but.
Is that a rhetorical question?
No, no, I would, if you can get that, I would like that.
The number of kids who actually got sick.
Got sick.
That were on quarantine or something?
Not, yeah. Just not, what I'm talk, what I'm talking about is, is okay, the CDC give you a recommendation. That's not a mandate. Okay?
Right.
So I, I take that as, okay, you three can decide, okay, they're recommending you should do this. But on the same lines, if the percentage of children that actually got sick from it is less than one percent or even less than that, why is it a discussion? So if we have 300 kids in the school and I know, I know Hudson, he's my neighbor.
Oh, yeah.
He got, he got sick, okay? But if the percentage is less than, why are we continuing that forward? That would be my questions to you, according to what he has, so it's. But if you make them have to, I'm just, I'd like it just to know, you know, if I can even get that, so.
Yeah. If I can get it.
Yeah.
Because when somebody calls and says their kid's sick.
But yet, you're, you're basing, you're basing policy on your kid is sick, but yet you're, you should know the actual number while you close the school down for two months.
Right.
On, on a set of overall, all figures.
I think our, I think our school nurse can do it.
Yeah.
Kids that tested positive but alerted the school that they're positive. But as far as if they were sick or not, you know, that's.
But we're, we're getting, we're getting to the point that you're, you're making decisions on assumptions that they're actually sick.
Yeah.
You're not, just because they test positive.
I'm just saying that might be a hard number to know.
That's probably HIPAA information.
Yes, and if he's.
According to the state of Minnesota in hospitals, vaccine and that information is not HIPAA. My wife works at a hospital, she, they've already told her that, so.
Okay, I'll see if I can find that out.
Yeah.
Um, yeah.
Sherry, we came in late because of the construction, didn't know where to go. Can we still add our names for public comment or?
Can I just, you know me and my policies and whatnot, and I know we talked about this before, but I'm thinking we might have to change this policy to actually reflect our practice. Because the wording in here says, persons who wish to have a subject addressed at a public meeting are encouraged to notify the superintendent in advance. It doesn't say they must. So even if somebody would sign up the night of the meeting, to me that says that should be okay for them to speak then. So if that's a practice we want to have going forward, we should change its policy to reflect that, that you have to call in ahead, that you must call in ahead of time or whatever it is. I'm just saying it's a little ambiguous in our policy, so.
Yes, go ahead.
Okay.
Sure.
Okay, so, um, I'll be short and sweet. And I'm just gonna throw it out there, ask everyone to join me if you feel that missing or you need to. Kayla and Lane.
Okay.
So I've been to a few of these over the past couple of years and I've kind of acknowledged that most of what people stand up here and say is kind of poo-pooed. So instead of saying anything of my opinion, I want to ask you guys to put God first. It's not our will, it's his. And I think with the community being completely divided and now this whole conversation of masks, no masks, Facebook just going crazy again. So I just want to ask our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name, thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us to stay our daily bread, forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. Lead us not into temptation, but deliver us to removal. Forever in kingdom and glory and glory forever and ever. Amen. Thank you.
Okay. I guess I have one comment here, I think we're gonna close this down, we gotta move on. Also, the Minnesota Department of Health and the Minnesota Department of Education has not waited on this yet as far as masks. So we do have to wait to see what they say, because they do, um, they can make mandates or whatever they choose to do. So this has not been totally decided yet and it will be worked out quickly, I think.
Well, and that was my question on it, because I know the CDC gives guidance all the time, but as you can see from this past year, different states have given different guidance. So that's what I was wondering, who is the decision maker on this? Is it our particular school, our school board, are we going directly from Department of Ed or is MSBA giving us guidance? I would just like that answered. Then a couple of other questions I wanted to clarify too was with athletics. How that would be handled with masks and also the busing.
What was the last thing you said?
Busing.
Busing.
Yeah.
And hopefully those things will be addressed by those departments. Okay. Let's move on to five point O consent agenda and need a motion. I'll make a motion real quick, consent agenda. Okay, a second?
Second.
Okay. Right, any discussion on consent agenda? All right. If not, we'll vote, those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those are opposed, nay? Great. That motion passes. Okay, number six, communication reports. We'll start with six point one, administrative reports. Dan isn't here, but we got Brad.
Brad, you wanna give us a. You got a really nice audience here, Brad, so.
It's a full house.
Brush up on your English.
Schedule update?
Yes, please.
Um, the interior's going.
Wait, let me introduce you.
Yeah.
Brad is our site superintendent for the construction project. And his job is to keep everybody moving. And if they're moving, move more efficiently. Move more effectively, but keep moving. And, um, so, thank you for that, Brad. He, uh, doesn't have a lot of friends who, when he's always telling people to get moving and double time and safety first, right though? So.
Safety's important.
Yep. Go ahead, Brad.
Uh, the renovation part, we are on schedule, like a normal summer renovation and stuff. Lot of work to do, but everything's looking good. Painter started painting this morning. Ceilings are scheduled for Thursday, um, in the administration area. Ceramic tile will start with the five bathrooms on Wednesday of this week, they'll be done by Monday. So that part's looking good, outside's busy as everybody can see. Uh, construction road's going in. These guys will move over and start the salt parking lot, uh, probably tomorrow, yeah. And then we'll go back to precast, there's a few things we have to catch up inside and then the gym will be finished up. Or actually, it's a storm shelter area, it's the only that's left up there for precast. So that'll be done end of next week and then the cranes will all leave.
For a while.
For a while. Yep. So the, that next is gonna go to the salt plot, then they'll come back over and we'll start soda corrections for performing arts, um, in the next couple of weeks. So the whole site will just keep changing, the pond is in the back that's done. This road that they're working on becomes the fire lane road. Becomes the permanent road coming in. Did you miss anything important?
Well, Julie and Carmel can pitch in in a little bit when it comes time for them to present.
We have a couple of areas ready for rook, rookers were here, they pulled field measurements. They're cutting all the lumber and everything off site, so they'll bring it in by the end of the week. We should have rookers on site.
All right, is that it Brad for now?
That's it for now, I could keep going, but it's what I do all day, so.
Well, it sounds like you got a good handle on it. Sounds like things are rolling, so, thank you. Okay, um, six point one two, we got that Minnesota State High School video, you gonna queue that up for us?
And while Jesse's queuing that up, there was a part in your, um, packet that is the why we play. Um, for our guests that are here with us tonight. Why we play is a, um, just so you all know, this is a Minnesota State High School League requirement that the board is required to watch every year when we re-up our membership, so, um, you ready? Perfect.
By the time students re-visit school, their families and our resources will have a terrible amount of time, energy and resources on their child sports, considering.
Private coaches, trials, travel tournaments and increasing pressure to specialize in single sport at early age.
Thirty is less than three percent of our athletes will ever go on to play college. This means ninety-seven percent of their students will have a terminal experience. When they graduate, their competitive playing days are over. So what's the purpose?
The purpose is the human growth and development of our students and connecting them to caring adults in their learning community.
For this to happen, it takes leadership and a community aligned around this purpose.
The purpose of a caring adult in students' lives has never been more important. Students face an incredible amount of pressure. There's peer pressure and social pressure and academic pressure and pressure to perform on the playing field or in the arts area. And what that's resulting in is a mental health crisis, where kids are facing anxiety and depression. There's a study called Hardwire to Connect that identifies three fundamental needs that everything impacts. The need to belong, the need to have some type of moral development. We define moral as relationships to other people. And then that base community, which is really held accountable to a set of expectations and values. Athletic connectivity programs can really provide a caring community for students. It's a place for them to be connected. It takes leadership to intentionally create connections and to create a culture that supports students in a caring community.
My purpose statement is to coach, to create a love of the game and foster community and grow among our student athletes.
Chip, you're ready for a red afterward.
The AD is the front-facing public person that's really leading the charge for all the things that happen within that program, that again is so beneficial to the student.
A strong activities director, athletic director is going to have the pulse of this school, is going to influence and impact the students through others and create that experience that we're looking for for all kids.
In my particular role as the activities director, I call it meeting from the middle out. I need to work with my principal and my superintendent and I need to work with my school board to understand what purpose-based activities are, what they look like, what they should feel like with our student athletes. And then I need to train coaches, work with athletes, work with our student body.
The value of, of a strong activities director for the entire system is something that I can't put a price tag on, because we're in the board members. And it's important for school board members to understand the purpose of our activities and athletic programs so that they remember their role in supporting our work and supporting our staff and in supporting our activities director in what he does.
We are really here to change the arc of every athlete. I think the most important thing I do is connect students, um, to each other, connect students to the school day, connect students to meaningful adults.
We want to win the state tournament, we want to have a winning record, but what's most important to Matt is having a winning culture.
It's all about the student experience and that doesn't necessarily equate to winning, or that, that equates to, uh, being able to walk away saying, I had fun, I got better, I did the best that I could, I want to continue. I know more about myself and I'm more prepared for whatever might come my way in the future.
We have to align our communities in order for athletic administrators and coaches to be supported.
Our school board knows that we're about more than just wins and losses, that we're part of the educational program, part of the education system. It's great to be able to show up at work every day, knowing that you're supported by your school board, your superintendent and your principal and that you have the ability to support your coaches, athletes, participants and their families. It's very important that you have all those important stakeholders in alignment and that they understand what the common language is and what it means to have a successful experience.
My purpose as a captain is to use the sport of baseball to help teach life lessons that'll help, help people down the road.
The adults are purposeful and deliberate about engaging the students, about something bigger than themselves. I may do it in my social studies classroom by teaching history and I may then later do it in my role as a softball coach, but the experience of the kids, that alignment that is tied through is that we are here to impact their life in a positive way.
There's no more rewarding feeling for me as an activities director to hear them say that they became a better person through their participation in our activities.
I think the greatest thing a school board can do is to define success. Publicly state that here's how we are going to define success within our school community. Are we growing and developing better people? Are we modeling the kind of character that we want our students to leave our school community with and go into the world with? Awareness is critical. We have to be aware of the purpose of why sports are part of our school community.
And finally, not only do we have to hold our coaches accountable, we have to hold our school community accountable to the transformative power of what sport can be. And that is connecting students to caring adults in their learning community.
Thanks, Jesse. There's no approval or anything necessary, this is just an informational. All right, uh, going to six point one point three, Judd, you're up.
We have Mitch first.
What's that?
Matt says Mitch is first.
Oh, I'm sorry. I don't even have Mitch on.
I don't even have Mitch on.
Sneak.
Sneaking there then, all right.
All right, so I apologize, I didn't have a handout or anything, so just doing this several days now, keep it fairly informal. First thing I have to say is with the ESSER funding that we have, we added a, an additional section of second grade and third grade at West. And then we've added an additional first grade section at East. Um, and then with those openings, the last week, we hired Nicole Sandru for third grade at West. We hired Sabrina Larson, um, as a threes preschool teacher at West. And then we hired Lisa Pauling as our fours preschool teacher at East. And for our recent resignation, uh, we will be interviewing for that position, um, over the rest of this week as well.
All right, thanks. Sorry, Mitch there, Mitch.
Not a problem.
All right. No, we, we.
Thank you. Uh, good evening, everybody. Uh, as you can see from my first bullet point, they're very happy to have the move done. Uh, my wife and I, we sold our house in Coqueta and are now living in Loma. Uh, I'll tell you what, uh, I started working relatively regularly here over the last couple of weeks and what a difference that drag has made. Cutting hours plus off in my drive is really amazing. Uh, so very happy to be in the area. Um, and then my second bullet point for you is really just wanted to give you a sneak peek of what we're looking at putting into the back to school packet. Uh, just to highlight some of the things, because it seems like we have kind of the same thing popping up year after year. Uh, supplies being the first one, it seems like we, uh, the stores always tend to run out of the, of the sheets at Target and Walmart. So, uh, when we meet with the building secretaries tomorrow, uh, Mr. Kent and I are, are gonna be going through this list, making sure that we have somebody who's going to call the stores, make sure that they're putting the, keeping those lists up to date so that we don't have any families that are, are wondering if you're trying to figure out what's going on, because they're not having access to that information. Also be on the website, uh, we want to make sure that, speaking of myself, I had to remember walking through, oh crap, I gotta grab that, uh, gotta grab that list. Uh, bus route info, we gotta, we gotta wait on Palmer for that, so, uh, we'll get that info out and that might end up being a supplemental piece of hand. Of course, then all the back to school information that comes in, open house details, um, you know, the date time, et cetera. Um, all the important forms, the FERPA, the application for education benefits, um, calendar, uh, the, uh, paperwork specialized for special education students, uh, that would be the MA forms for families, uh, so that they have access to that. Uh, and then a review of open house info for incoming seventh graders. And then I'm going to be, uh, doing some sort of tour or something for those seventh graders, this is a, a refreshers with them when they come in their first day of school. Uh, and then, uh, we have our, our new PL coordinator, Sonia Stark, uh, who we're gonna be working with to make sure that we have appropriate translation. They have copies of that, so, um, it's always, uh, kind of hairy to try and get this stuff organized and secretary's always doing a great job. Uh, but, uh, we're gonna make sure we did that start tomorrow.
And that includes busing, busing as a rule?
Yeah, the, the bus route info, I haven't talked to John yet. And, uh, I know from my, my minimal exposure to the bus routes, that usually the secretary's taking that information. So there might end up being contact with that later on. I wanted to throw that in there just in case, because those, they're gonna send me straight tomorrow when we, they might just say, yeah, no, that's not something we do.
Okay.
Yeah, it is, we have to wait for John to get it and as many people sign up it adjusts the bus route, so that's one of the last things.
Sure.
I've helped with that in the past, so.
Okay.
So, so, bus routes could be a little.
A separate deal, okay.
Thank you, good.
Do you have a thought or idea about when that back to school is?
Oh, yes, thank you. Um, we're, we would like for it to. We would like for it to be the end of this week, if possible. Secretary's schedule, summer schedule, that might play into it a tiny little bit. No later than next week. And I do also want to add that there's, I do have on here that there's going to be a letter from Superintendent Darius, Mr. Kent and myself, with a brief COVID update. Again, that's not going to be the details. And then that information, once we have some time to process and figure out what we feel the best handle for it is, we'll get that out there. And that'll be in our...
All right. Anybody got any questions for Judd or Mitch? All right, then. 6.14 is Sherry.
So in my report, I spoke about ESAR III money. And it's pretty prescriptive. But with all the parents here, I want you all to know that our first priority in using ESAR III money, that's, ESAR stands for Help Me Out Mitch and Judd, elementary, secondary, school, education. And so my, our big goal with that is, as Mitch just said, class size reduction. So in addition to $4 million that the legislature gave us for English language learners, we were able to take, hiring of our new ELL teacher, pay for it out of this, and then add that last second grade classroom, class size reduction. That, everything we're going to look at is through the lens of, first of all, academic achievement, mental health, social, emotional learning, making sure we have those kinds of supports for our kids coming back to school. And also planning for the next year for things like summer school, Monday school. We had some tremendous success in the high school the last couple of months with Monday school and kids being able to make up classes that they had failed possibly due to COVID or being at home. So those are the first things we're looking at with that money. Secondarily, looking at furnishings. How can we get furnishings that... Judd and Mitch and I, our office has tables. So Mr. Olson's classroom in the high school, they work at tables. But we know that if we had another outbreak of COVID, it'd be better if we had desks and chairs. So we're going to look at getting things like that. Ventilation, any ventilation, new doors. One of the things that we heard about a lot today when we were, not heard about but read about, is how important it is to have good ventilation, to be able to open doors, have windows that open and allow airflow to go through. So anyway, I've already talked about the COVID. One thing, though, that I wanted to say when somebody brought up, who approves us, I intentionally reach out on behalf of McCray to the Commissioner of Education. And I'm in a group with several epidemiologists with the Department of Health. And the Assistant Commissioner, Stephanie Graff, and I just reached out to her this morning and said, "We're going to need some support on this before you might be ready." So that's my connection with the powers that be. Get to know them, work with them, right? Know what you represent, know that we're looking out for our kids, and let's get this one, this approved. Also, I talked about back-to-school information, but Judd touched on that. You know there's a shortage of teachers. There's a shortage of teachers, there's a shortage of paraprofessionals. I want to just say thanks to the board for approving that increase for sub-teacher pay. It's something that the teachers have talked to me about and said, "This is important. We're going to get subs because we have to be gone." I see Megan nodding her head. If teachers have to be gone, we want a nice selection of substitute teachers. So thank you for that, approving that, and substitute paraprofessionals. Actually, everything, custodians and cooks do while we're at it. So that's all I have.
Rick, any questions for Sherry?
How do we compare with neighboring districts for the sub? Do we get our help because of our entries? Are we more in the ballpark?
We're, we want to be better. We want to be better so we can get people. We had, Kim, we did, got some research from the area schools from October 24th.
We're very competitive, but with our longer day, people are very well, there should be more then. So we'll be able to.
That was a major concern, is the length of day because people can go to Wilmer and sub for about an hour and a half shorter day, an hour shorter day, for a similar amount of pay. So we thought, well, you know what? We're four days instead of five. If we gotta amp that up a little bit to try and get subs, it's important to you.
And that, the $4 million, that is the complete amount that came to McCray then?
For ELL.
No.
No, 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 oh my gosh, you're going to the state. I'm going, wait, that sounded really good. But that's $4 million from the state for, just for ELL.
So what was our portion of 100-plus thousand?
It's probably a grant process.
Yeah.
Or we have to apply for it?
Yeah, we don't have to get it. We may haven't told the code yet, but it's going to be available.
Just came out last week. So like you, you're waiting for all the language.
Competitive grant, or is it just based upon this big number size?
I don't have any information on it yet.
So we hope we get it, or we will get it? We just don't know.
We're going to work hard to get it. And you know what? If we don't, it's still good for our kids to reduce that class size. And if we have to pay for it out of ESAR III, then we'll pay for it out of ESAR III.
Okay, 6.2 committee reports. First is the P O C update. Carmel and myself.
Well, I can talk about these metal panels. We had an issue with our metal panel supplier, so we actually had a special P O C meeting last week.
P O C for everybody in the room is Project Oversight Committee. And we have two board members, sorry.
Absolutely not.
It's Carmel's turn to talk, so I'll just take over. Project Oversight Committee. So we always have two board members that are involved in these decisions.
Yeah, and then just a little background. We met every two weeks for a long time there when we were really in the mid-grade or planning, I guess. And now we pushed it back a little bit to once a month, but in case I'd be at a special one last week. So anyway, the metal panel supplier ran into an issue with them, so we had to pick a new supplier. And they, of course, had a little different style that we went with this. The other one was a little flatter design. I don't know how else to explain it. And then, of course, they had a little different colors. So we picked these two for our paneling. And this part is going to be on, between the brick and the trim?
Roof trim.
Roof trim. Is this, this is going to go in between the, on different areas of the building?
Hold on one second. Hey Brett, is Brett still back there?
Yep.
Can you put the picture up of the elementary part of the building that shows where the new steel's going?
Megan, it'd be right there on my computer.
Sorry, you guys. The guy that was, you go around the meeting, he got called out because his dad was out.
Yeah, that's good.
Yeah, right there.
So that tannish color in Wilmer's, this color. That's where this is going to go on the building. And actually, this is a good picture too because it says McCray, it was a sandbox. I wanted to say, we've decided on going with this. We wanted to try and incorporate a little green in our building. So we're going to go with something like this for the entrance areas. And I, I don't know, maybe you want to talk about the security?
Yeah. Well, we just had a, yeah, we had a, one of the meetings, we talked about security because we had two vendors that we were debating between. And we ended up making a decision based on the common information that they presented us. One of them was quite a bit of a savings, so there wasn't really any reason not to select them. So we did. So that was finally resolved after all of that, all those conversations and specifications and all that kind of stuff. So got that to you. And that would include all of our cameras and all that kind of stuff that Jesse needs to know about. All right. The other thing we did on P O C was we had some issues with the kitchen wall and that food science part of the building. So unbeknownst to us, somewhere we missed it. There's four U-shaped kitchen areas in there with the wall between the two, which we all assumed was about four feet tall, but it actually went to the ceiling. So that caused problems for the teacher and supervision and making eye contact with the students. So we basically cut holes in the wall, created some windows in there so that we could see. We had some plumbing and things in those walls, so it couldn't be removed. And we had some ranges with range hoods and ventilation. So we just did the best we could and opened it up as much as we could. So the kinds of things you run into in project practice. So we got that squared. Let's see. Scott, you're next.
Can I, I have a question.
Sure, yeah, yeah, go ahead.
I have a question being asked. Is there a breakthrough for the elementary staff?
Yes.
Okay, they didn't see it on the plan, so they were just asking. Because I would ask.
It's in the office.
Yeah, it's in the...
And then I know I sound like a broken record, but it's been months and months and months that I've talked about this. And I'm saddened that it wasn't above in the P O C report. But the special ed staff are still not feeling valued. I got an email, and I'd like to just share some answers on that because we, as the board, are the ones that get to make decisions. It's not our contractors. Our special ed staff, three or four of them have master's degrees in their respective field. And they're asking, "Why doesn't our opinion count?" Remark is consistently being made that the middle school provides flexibility, but they can't tell us what they're exactly talking about. And that every school is not the same, just like every special ed child is not the same. So why should we have to follow another school's story? They want to know what makes the P O C or the contractors the experts. And they're really struggling with this because many of them have master's degrees in education, and they feel like they are the experts. And their opinions are not being valued or listened to. I think the biggest thing that Nancy shared with me because she selected thoughts from the staff is that one of the architects, Chris Miller, commented one of the board meetings, that really hit home to one of the special ed teachers. And he said, "Someone needs to make sacrifices." And the staff shared with Nancy that special ed kids have enough burdens that they need to be the ones not going to have to sacrifice anymore. And even though there's new teaching concepts out there, the staff feel that it's very important for the future of our education to not, not have that large move for those special ed students. And of all the staff, they feel that they are the ones who adjust the new teaching concepts the most. In spite, we're probably the most accommodating for the new teaching techniques. We're consistently changing our styles to meet the needs of the students. And basically, they have reiterated time and time again for months through the P O C, to the board, parents that come to the board, parents that have sent letters to the board, and nothing changes. And they're just really asking, "Please, listen to them." I think if we value our staff, we have to do this. We want to get this right. They want to get this right for the best needs of our students. And they're not only just, like they said, we're not just crabbing, but we're also offering suggestions. And just really need the board's support to move this forward and to make those changes. So I just need to share that information with everyone.
All right. So then, Scott, you're up.
Okay.
Negotiations.
Okay, negotiations. We have met with at least, at least once with all the non-certified staff. I believe we're basically done with the custodians. And we're very, very close with the paraprofessionals and the administrative assistants and the food service people. I think probably one more meeting will do it, hopefully. And we're meeting Wednesday at 1:00 with the teachers.
Anybody got any questions for Scott? Okay, if not, we'll go, let's see. 7.0 discussion, apparently we have none this time.
Can I just ask, maybe could we get some conversation from the board about what the rest of your thoughts? Sorry, I know we heard from Julie and Carmel about the special ed space, but what are your thoughts? We haven't heard a lot.
I'll just say, I haven't got any emails or letters that cheer me up. So I'm kind of, other than what you bring forward, of course. But it'd be nice if the whole world was included to see what helped, I guess.
Well, I think they're trying to follow the chain of command and they're, and they've done that, and they've taken it...
But I mean, if you're giving them, we should all give them.
Deb is the only one who speaks up, so I'm the one who emails her. And I shared that with other people. Emailed that because she's the only one who talks at these meetings.
Yeah, I personally have confidence in the P O C committee because I'm not on it. I don't want to tell them what to do. They should have done, and I know they've done their research. We've got Sherry on there, we've got our principals. I, you know, other than keep, you know, bringing your points up, I can't make the decision that, I don't know if it's good enough or not. I don't. So I have confidence in who we got running the committee.
And so basically, then you're saying you don't have concept competence or don't value what our staff have to say?
No, that's not what I said.
That's what they...
There is special ed staff on the P O C committee when we went through and chose our design for this. And it was approved by everybody on the P O C.
And some of the committee members got very intimidated. The one committee member got very intimidated. And since then, I think it's been months that they've been bringing back thoughts, ideas, and suggestions. And they, they just want to make sure it's right for our students, and they don't feel it's right right now. We are the decision makers, the board. It's not the P O C, it's this group sitting around this gate wall that are the decision makers. And we can say, "Whoa, hold the fort here. Let's really take a look at what can we do?" Because they had some excellent suggestions.
Well, and it has been passed by the board. Your plan has been approved by the board.
And the board can correct that. And the board can make a change because we are the board. I just, again, think it really devalues what our staff are seeing as the best needs for our students. Scott, thoughts?
Well, did the teachers need the P O C? And like Carmel said, one of the teachers is on it. So I would hope she expressed her opinion.
After our last meeting, the special ed department...
They have not heard back.
They have not met or recontacted. So that's what we talked about last time.
The email said that they have not heard back yet. Kim sent the email, just saying that they've been busy with a lot of things and haven't had a chance to sit down and discuss it. So they have not heard back yet.
We did, we did send a couple of options that we thought could work within our budget of what's already there and with the construction documents that have already gone out. And then I was gone after that. So I did not hear what their response was until I did get an email last week too.
I just think, again, I thought that meaning that we have with sitting down and talking, that that's sometimes the best way to get some of our differences and some of the things that need to be done versus sending emails back and forth and whatnot. But they don't feel like they're being valued and listened to.
And it's not to say you guys made the wrong choice when you did it. But now you get to see the full picture, you're down the road. You learned a little more. Come back to it and look at it again and say, "Okay, is there something next?"
It's just hard to make changes at this point. It costs, costs them time as well for looking that long.
That would be beneficial to say to people that have emailed you guys because I know at least three people have emailed and it's a really rigmarole response. Instead of just saying, you know, "We would love to change it, but we can't at this point." That's a better response than this wish-washy not response.
I think what we've talked about, though, we get here from Dan that changeovers are possible. They might be costly, but yet any construction project, you can do changeovers at any place and time during the project. And so, that is a possibility, so. But I just, I just wish that we could come up with some more compromising of a solution with them because they truly, they put in that email, they love their kids. And they're thinking of the best interest of our students and their kids, and that's where they're coming from, so.
Okay. 8.0 is business items. We're going to need some action on this. I'm going to need a motion to approve 8.1 membership in the Minnesota Rural Education Association, that's M R E eight. You going to want to make a motion?
Oh.
All second.
Okay. Any discussion on that particular item or questions? And it looks like we've already paid that fee or we're, for some reason, it was prepaid or?
Um, no, I wonder if you're thinking about M R E eight and all that. I mean, not M R E eight, Minnesota State High School, I believe, last year.
Oh, that could be.
Yeah. So, this one, no, this one just came up, it arrived the day after our last meeting. And I tell you, M R E eight does a lot to lobby for small schools. That's hence their term, Minnesota Rural Education Association. They really, really go to bat for us in legislation and they're there to help all throughout the year, so.
Yeah, and I will say they do send nice emails with updates about things that are very pertinent to our rural districts, at least in my opinion.
They've done a great job, Scott, for giving us that extra time.
Yes.
Okay. Number more questions or discussion, will vote, those in favor of approval of membership at M R E eight, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, nay. Okay, that motion passes. And then 8.2 is this motion to approve a special meeting. Are you wanting us to choose one of those dates? Is that the question?
Yeah, I mean, I sent, I gotta say, I, I've made a tight deadline for us because I know parents want to know. If you guys don't want to meet, I mean, this involves the three of us meeting again, cleaning up the document, meeting with somebody at M D E to let them know what our plans are, and getting it published, letting people know. So, I mean, I want, a week in that, a week and two days, we're going to push through this. But it's up to you if you want to meet, but I think people want to know. I just threw those two dates out.
What were the two dates?
Yeah, what are the dates?
Wednesday, July 21st, Thursday, July 22nd.
I can't do Thursday.
I probably can't do Wednesday.
Right.
I can do either.
I can't do.
Debbie, you said you can't Thursday? And you can't Wednesday?
Or Thursday.
Can we do the next week?
I can't do Thursday. I could Wednesday.
You can, Julie can't Wednesday. And Tate, okay, so any different date?
Could we do Monday? I know that's, you're Monday.
Why, that's a, yeah. Are you checking up the next Monday or are you checking up the 19th?
You know what? I don't know.
I can't do either of those, so I've got 19, I have a six yard house and 25 hours. You have this long, 6? 26.
26.
Maybe the 26 doesn't work for you, Deb?
That could work. How about everybody else though? Want to miss the soon enough?
Yeah.
Or soon, or soon. Is that soon enough?
Yeah, is that soon enough?
Well, it actually gives us more time than we thought about.
It gives you more time.
But is it soon enough?
Yep.
And does it have to be approved by the board? Hasn't passed?
I, I think it should be approved. I, I want you all to know what's in it and.
How about you, Carmel, Monday?
26 works.
How about the time? I didn't put a time in there.
Six.
So, you do six again?
Same thing, yeah. All right, so let, somebody make a motion here to get that special meeting on this school. Okay, Deb? Second?
Second.
So, that would be May, Monday, the 26th, July 26th.
I heard Sherry saying something.
Yep, well, should do it, should it be here? I don't know, Brad.
Brad.
26, is there going to be a place to meet in the school on July 26th at 6:00?
It's quite a deal, it's going to be safe.
Uh, yeah, I mean, the Commons is taking up with the equipment. What?
It's going to be a very busy place.
Can we meet at west? That, I don't know what Scott's status is on waxing floors and usually leaves the biggest areas until last.
What do you do?
Here?
We'll post it. I think that'll be on the website where.
Could you schedule it for here and then adjust if there's something available inside?
Yeah. Okay, so some were here in, uh, Clear City, I guess, huh? School. Okay, um, need to vote on that, I guess. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Okay, that one passes. Okay, so then, I guess we're going to adjourn for a tour, huh?
Can I just ask, can we put this on the next, like, August agenda so we can get this?
Yeah, for August, absolutely. Um, so we're not like adjourning for a tour, we're going to go on a tour and then we.
Come back and adjourning the meeting. Right. We're adjourning this meeting, we're supposed to tell. Yeah. Tour.
Hey, as far as questions that we have, what, now, what would you prefer? If we call you?
What's that? I missed the first one.
Call you, email you, write you, we want to talk.
Yeah. And then we're going to, we're going to, I'm going to call MSBA and see how else they want. It's helpful if you do, but we, we're going to clarify this so that there's some flexibility.
Well, we just don't want to lose, at least I don't.
Everybody's there. Yeah. Okay, we don't have enough, um, I feel like I'm saying we don't have enough pieces of pie. We don't have enough of these helmets for everybody to go on the tour, but Jesse will stream the tour. Um, and you can watch it later. The board doesn't do any business on the, it doesn't do any business, they can't make any decisions. It's just, we listen to what Brad tells us. Right, Brad?
Yes.
Tell them to do the chimichanga or something.
I will, I will make the motion.
I was trying to, I was like, trouble me or?